Happy Saturday. I want to thank everybody for coming on a beautiful day in Falls Church. It's Falls Church Cleanup Day, among other things, and I know we've got a lot of volunteers coming into the building, and hopefully we can grab a few of them to come in to learn a little bit about the budget process before the council takes its actions later in the month of April. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager, and I'm going to give a presentation. I'll be joined by the vice chairman of the school board, John Lawrence, to present information on the school budget, and then after that, we'll have a town hall-type discussion and questions and answers to try to keep people informed and allow you to have a chance to provide your input to the city council. Vice Mayor David Snyder is here to make some introductory remarks, and I would note right at the outset that our mayor right now, Dave Tartar, is giving the opening pitch at the Little League baseball, and he will join us, I think, in about 20 minutes or half an hour or so.
Yes, to do all of that.
That's right. Mr. Snyder.
Thanks. Morning, everyone. Good morning. Hey, thanks a lot for being here. I want to introduce a few folks that are here. First of all, all the citizens that are here, you're the most important participants today, but there are some others of us who you have elected in various positions, and I want to make sure that you all know where they are so that you can talk to us both during and after the meeting. First is former Mayor Nader Baruch, a current member of city council, Phil Duncan, Mary Beth Conley. Mary Beth, great. School board, of course, you'll hear from John Lawrence. We have Lindy Hockenberry with the planning commission. Any other elected or appointed officials here that we ought to note, please put up your hand? Tom Clinton, of course, longtime elected official here, and he has a lot to do with the money that actually gets collected and put into the coffers. So, thanks a lot, Tom, for being here. Anyone else? All right, well, this is the second of our town hall meetings on the budget. The budget process really is sort of a 12-month exercise at this point, and the budget was first worked on by the school board, presented to the city manager, and the city manager presented his proposed budget. So, we had one town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago. We have this one. We've had some work sessions already and opportunities for public input during regular council meetings. There'll be another opportunity this coming Monday night, and then we're slated for the budget passage, I think, the last meeting in April, right?
April 27.
Right. So, let me emphasize the importance of your input. We've listened to what people have said before. We'll listen to what you have to say today. We've read every email that's come in, every letter. The input is very, very much appreciated. I want to say just two things of substance before we hear from the presentations. The first is that local government really performs most of what people rely on, on a daily basis in terms of what government provides. It's everything from streets to public safety, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, police, of course, the all-important education. Virtually everything that people rely on, from the time they wake up till the time they go to sleep at night, is provided by local government. We all feel very keenly the responsibility to maintain the very highest quality services for all of our people. We also recognize that unlike other levels of government, we have an obligation to balance the budget, and that sometimes means some bad financial news we have to deliver to people, and finding the right balance is what all this is about. So, I want to thank our citizens for participating in that effort. There's one other point that I want to make. There was a little bit of discussion in an earlier town hall meeting, presented actually by one of our citizens, who said, "Well, what if our school funding formula were the same as other jurisdictions in Virginia? How much state money would be coming into Falls Church, actually our own money being recycled through Richmond, coming back to Falls Church in terms of supporting our education program, resulting in a less tax need from our citizens locally?" So, we got those numbers from the school board, and I just want to point that out. The Falls Church news press reported on it, but I want to clarify a couple of points. If we had the same composite index score as Fairfax County, which the last time I saw was a neighboring fairly large county with many of the same characteristics of Falls Church, our tax rate would be six cents lower. If we had the same composite rating index as Loudoun County, which, by the way, is the second wealthiest jurisdiction in America, according to some standards, right after Falls Church, our tax rate would be 13 cents lower. So, that gives you some idea about the realities that all of us as citizens and public officials are dealing with. Some of the realities are not just what we do here, but they're imposed by both federal and state mandates, and in the case of the state government, an absence of what, in my view, is fair support for what we're doing here locally, despite the huge amounts of money that our citizens pay to Richmond that doesn't come back. But those are a couple of points that I wanted to make, but really, the town hall, we'll first hear presentations from the city manager, and then the vice chairman of the school board, and then this is really your meeting, to say whatever it is that you want to say and ask whatever questions you want to say. Again, thanks to all of our citizens and our officials for being here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder. Cindy Mester, Assistant City Manager, is here. She is really our staff lead on putting together the capital improvements program. Our CFO, Richard LaContre, who oversees the entire budget development, is in the back of the room, and so we're here to answer questions as well. And I forgot the clicker for our slides.
If he's in Rod's to get it.
Okay. But Cindy, could you maybe drive here so I don't have to walk back and forth, because I'll stay here?
Can you talk about the reason for the microphone?
Yes, we're taping this. I want to thank our public access TV crew, Mike and Dwayne, who are here, and they're taping this, and we'll broadcast this meeting out to the community. It's on cable TV as well as streaming on the web. You can access it either way. And so, when we do get to the question-and-answer period, we'll pass the microphone, and that's really for the people watching on TV, so they can hear what your questions are as well as the responses. So, I'm going to go through a presentation, which we've done a couple of times now, first in the original presentation of the city council, and in the town hall meeting we had about four weeks ago. And so, I'm going to go through it briskly, but there'll be time for questions and answers afterwards, and I think that will be similarly the case with Mr. Lawrence. So, our first slide, just a few series of slides, just to talk about some of the main things that are going on in the budget. Economic development and investment in infrastructure have really been the top pushes by the city council, to make sure that we're doing our budgeting, making sure we're making the long-term investments in the city that will protect our long-term financial sustainability and take care of our infrastructure. Next slide. And you see that in activity throughout the city with improvements to our parks that are underway, at the West End Park and Howard Herman Park, by the Scout House. The turf and track renovation is in the budget for FY16, the dedication of the Tenner Hill Historic Site, so that you see a lot of improvements underway in the city right now. And now, I've got a clicker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Investment in our facilities. The Thackeray preschool just opened this year. Mount Daniel Elementary School is going through permits right now with Fairfax County. We have investments in city hall. We have a lot of public safety investments that are going on right now, and to help pay for all of this, we have a lot of private investment in the city happening right now. We had the Hilton Garden Inn open this year, the North Gate, a new grocery store up at the Eden Center. The Reserve at Tenner Hill, or the Lincoln at Tenner Hill, is under construction, as is the Harris Teeter Project. Those are developing, are growing the tax base. In 2014, in the tax year that this budget we're talking about, we have $1.1 million of revenue that's generated from that economic development that's happening right now. And over the last 10 years, the mixed-use development is generating, on a recurring basis, $6.2 million of annual revenue for the city. So, that economic development is very important for us for our long-term sustainability, but it also presents lots of challenges for us, and we need a very high-performing city government to be able to take advantage of the opportunities that are presented before us and also handle the complexity that comes with it. Our population growth, even without any mixed-use development over this three-year period since the last census, has grown by 10%. And really, what that is, is families moving into the city in our mixed-use, in our single-family neighborhoods, where you see it probably in your neighborhood, houses being torn down and rebuilt, and new families moving in. But regionally, there's a great deal going on, regional transportation initiatives, environmental initiatives, and we're trying to manage all of that in a way that promotes the city's long-term sustainability and gets good investment here in the city. So, here's a summary of the budget. This is on the expenditure side. Overall, our expenditures are growing by 2.5%, and this is an updated chart. Since I presented the budget in early March, we have rebid the city's and the school's health insurance program, and as a result of that, we're going with a new health insurance provider, and that's resulted in some reductions in costs, both for employees on their premiums and for the city as well. So, with that, the general government will be growing by about 0.9% overall for FY16 in the proposed budget. The school transfer growth would be growing by 4.5%. Debt service is going up by 816,000, and that's the new debt service for the Mount Daniel Elementary School. We do have, as new initiatives, building safety inspection improvements, and those would be paid for entirely through building permit fees that are coming into the city.
Before you go, could you explain what school transfer fee means?
The school transfer?
Yeah.
So, that's the school board request. So, we call it the school transfer because that's from the city government, that goes to the school board for the operations of the schools. And Mr. Lawrence will speak in more detail as to what's behind that in the school budget. So, the budget guidance was, to me, back in January, no tax rate increase for general government expenditures, maintain competitive compensation, use our building permit fees to handle the public safety inspections that are needed, provide multi-year forecasts, and comply with adopted financial policies. So, I'll talk about those in a little bit more detail, but in terms of the tax rate, here are the, sort of, the calculation for the funds that are available for operations in 2016. So, without any tax rate increase, our organic revenue growth would be just under $3 million. If we handle our debt service increases and FY15 use of fund balance for operations, that leaves us with $944,000 for FY16 operations. The general government is coming in with about a 0.9% increase in expenditures, $300,000, and the school board request is a $1.6 million increase for a 4.5% increase. And so, the spending overall is just under $2 million. And so, that results in a $1 million gap now, which would require 3 cents on the tax rate to close that. Now, when I presented the budget back in early March, it was a 4-cent requirement to balance the budget, but with the changes on the healthcare premiums that we talked about just a moment ago, that is now 3 cents. And so, the city council now is working through all the budget options to see what, where they will actually finally land on the tax rate in late April. Here's the revenue summary. With a 3-cent increase in the tax rate, that's a 6.6% increase in real estate tax revenues overall. And we'll talk in just a moment about what share of that's from assessed value and what shares from the tax rate. All our other revenues, though, are pretty flat, and that's a, with the exception of permits and licenses, because of all the building permit activity that's going on in the city, that actually is increasing, and we're showing that in our projections. But the region is having a pretty flat economic situation, largely because of federal spending cuts and sequestration, and that is not unique to the city of Falls Church. Every jurisdiction in Northern Virginia is experiencing that.
Do you have more information on that 21% decrease in state and federal funding?
Yeah, so this is, in some respects, a little bit of an accounting issue. The state had been funding Womata directly through the city. They did that for one year, and now they're no longer doing that. They're going to fund it right through a regional body. So, there's no material change, significant material change, behind that. And so, it's noted here, but it doesn't have a big impact on the budget. Yes?
Good morning. The real estate tax, what is that?
So, that is the tax that you pay on your, if you're a property owner in the city, that's the tax that you pay on your property.
Is that commercial and residential?
Yes, so this is combined from commercial.
Do you find a loophole in the future if you grow this throughout?
Okay.
I can't verify that. I read an article, someone's comment in the paper, that said that commercial tax has flatlined.
It has.
Whereas residential has not, and that doesn't help me to evaluate whether that's true or not.
Okay. Well, we're going to talk about that in just a slide, and so, this is meant to be a summary of an overall summary, and I think actually it probably would be most effective for people. Just let me get through a couple of these slides, and then we can have questions at the end. So, this is the overall assessed value, and per the point that was just made, our commercial assessed value, and this is true throughout the region, is flat with some slight declines. There is about 30 million square feet of vacant office building space in Northern Virginia. The majority of that's right in Fairfax County, right close to our borders, going out the Toll Road, but 9 million vacant in Arlington, and so that's really driving down those commercial assessed values. Single-family overall is 3.7% increase. We do have larger increases in townhouses and condos. And our apartments, we had the North Gate project come online, so that's a big chunk of this increase, but the market assessed value of apartments is going up as well. But overall assessed value is 4.8%. And I will just note that of this assessed value growth, over half of that is from new construction, including in this area. Half of this increase in assessed value is due to the tear downs and rebuilds that you see out in your neighborhoods, and a large portion of this is new construction as well. So, the tax rate at the proposed rate, if the council were to go at $1.33 and 1/2, we're currently at $1.30 and 1/2 as our tax rate. This is the comparison in the Northern Virginia region, and so what you do see is that the smaller jurisdictions, the city is on the low side of the tax rates for the towns and the smaller cities in Northern Virginia, but then the counties typically have the lower tax rate due to their economies of scale and some other reasons I'll talk about in just a moment. If you add in the trash pickup and other fees that are, or other taxes that are in the county tax rates, this comes to probably a closer approximation or comparison of what the tax rates are. And so, in the Northern Virginia region, including the counties, the average tax rate is $1.28. Yes?
If you go back to that, I think it might be helpful to also point out that, with the exception of maybe Manassas, I don't think any of those small towns have their own school system like we do. Is that correct?
Yeah, Fairfax City and Manassas and Manassas Park all have their own school systems. The towns do not. These are the city's tax rates over time, and so going back 20 years, what you see is a pretty stable tax rate at $1.10, $1.13 for the first half, the first 10 years of this chart. With the run-up of assessed values, tax rates dropped, and then with the litigation of the water system and the recession, the tax rates increased above $1.20 in this area in the last five years. And so, at this point in our history, the city reduced costs very dramatically, both on the school side and on the general government side. Reduced on the general government side our workforce by 15% as we made these structural changes associated with the recession and the changes from the sale of the water system. In terms of the median tax bill, the, these are the changes over time, and in 2015, we'd be looking at approximately a $547 increase in the median homeowner's tax bill, and that would be $354 due to assessment growth and $193 due to a 3-cent tax rate increase. Now, those figures do not include the new construction, so this is meant to be for a home that has not had any major additions on it or a tear down and rebuild. If you look at the tax rates and population in Northern Virginia, and you put it on a scale of population, what you do see is with the smaller jurisdictions, and the tax rate here is on the Y-axis, that the higher tax rates do tend to be on the smaller population size than the larger jurisdictions, i.e. the counties with their economies of scale. This is the city here, here and with the basket of the smaller jurisdictions in Northern Virginia. Assessed value by property class, and this gets to your question, how much do we depend on commercial for our real estate taxes? And the city's ratio were 73% residential, 6% apartments, and 21% commercial. If you compare that to Fairfax or Alexandria, their higher commercial rates or higher commercial ratios do correlate to lower taxes, and that's a good deal of the thrust behind the city's efforts at economic development. About 14% of our land in the city is zoned for commercial uses, and so we're working to have that commercial land produce higher tax yields for the city. Just comparing us to Arlington County, that's about a 1/3 difference in that ratio, and that's important in terms of a correlation to tax rates. Another important correlation is the local composite index, and I think Mr. Lawrence is going to speak to this, and Mr. Snyder spoke to this just a moment ago. The local composite index is an ability-to-pay measure that the State Department of Education uses to fund the standards of quality for education statewide. So, your more rural jurisdictions or less affluent jurisdictions get about 80% of their education budget is paid for by the state. Your more affluent or higher ability-to-pay jurisdictions, 20% of the education budget is paid for by the state. That's a formula that does distribute income across the state in order to meet the standards of quality for education. Fairfax and Loudoun, we'll just do a quick comparison of that. With the city's LCI at 80, there are nine jurisdictions that have that highest composite index of 80, and they include Alexandria, Arlington, a couple of surprising ones like Bath County because of some, I think, the homestead and some other features, or maybe there's a power plant. A power plant in their jurisdiction that helps their ability to pay. But if you compare, if we had the same local composite index as Fairfax County, we would get 1.9 million more from the Commonwealth of Virginia to fund education. And I'll compare notes with Mr. Snyder, but dividing that by $370,000, that's about 5 cents on the tax rate, 5 or 6 cents on the tax rate. And similarly with Loudoun County, with their composite index of 56, that's about a $3.8 million state funding that we do not get because of the LCI, and that's state policy.
Why is Loudoun County so much lower? Isn't it also Loudoun County?
Well, we can talk about the reasons why, but Mr. Kimball, would you like to speak to it? Mr. Kimball has served on state committees that have looked at the LCI in the past and can speak to it.
Certainly. And, Sean? Yeah, great. As Mr. Shields pointed out, it is a formula. There are three primary components in the formula. The thing is, they're not weighted equally. They're weighted differently. One is the value of real estate, the assessed value of real estate. The second is taxable retail sales, and the third is adjusted gross income. Real estate is weighted 50% in that formula, and that is really, I think, the driving force here, because on a per-acre basis, Falls Church versus Loudoun County, you know, it's very, very different. Now, adjusted gross income, which I believe is weighted like 10%, I think, I believe that taxable retail sales are weighted 40%, so it's that adjusted gross income piece that is just weighted so very, very lightly at 10%, and yet that is what is often used for comparisons of local wealth.
Does it really create value for the assessed value or the sold value?
The assessed value. And the assessed value, correct me if I'm wrong, is actually a derivative of sale, previous sales values of like types of property, so.
That's correct.
They do correlate.
What is the political feasibility of getting any change in those ratios, formula?
Well, it's statewide policy, and these formulas were last looked at, Hunter.
The '70s.
In the '70s. And so, there are winners and losers with the way that the formula is done. One that I think often gets the most attention actually is Virginia Beach, which is high, they get so much of their income from hotel taxes. Hotel taxes are not in the formula at all, and so that's a great boon for Virginia Beach taxpayers that they have such a low LCI, just as an example.
Would it be worthwhile for the city to look into whether we could advocate for updating that formula?
Yeah.
Even though Cindy Mester and I do the capital, as Mr. Shields indicated, but I also have the opportunity to try to make changes in Richmond on behalf of council's legislative program. Although it's formally not been looked at since 1970, for the last 10 years that I've had this role, every year, Northern Virginia localities as a group have gone to Richmond saying, "We need to revisit this." It never passes, and politically, and Mr. Snyder has experienced this directly, with going down to Richmond on this issue, it will never change because of the winner-loser piece until the state puts more money into the pie, so you have more money to distribute and maybe do a phased hold harmless. So, it's really just been a political challenge and a state funding issue that has precluded it from changing. And as Mr. Hunter has often said, sometimes you have unintended consequences, and it could get worse when you open up stuff in Richmond.
Or they can equalize sales costs.
All right. Yes, sir.
I see your increased assessment, your increased rate. Where is the stormwater fee in your calculation? That's an additional cost to residents.
It is, and that's a good point. In the comparison of tax rates, we tried to control for that, so that Fairfax County, for instance, has a, I think now, 2 and 1/2 cents on the tax rate for stormwater, and so I didn't include that in the comparison, because we have a fee. So, for apples to apples, we don't provide that comparison. But yeah, our stormwater fee for the average household, I believe, is about $179 is our calculation. And one thing that is important to note is that when we did that, when we made that change, we took money out of the general fund, and so that was the equivalent of about a 1-cent decrease in the tax rate when we made that change last year as well. And then, one second point on the stormwater fee is those costs are going up because of state and federal mandates related to the Chesapeake Bay. And so, by going to the fee, we were able to handle those costs, we believe, in a more equitable fashion, so that those, you know, your large shopping centers with large parking lots are actually paying significantly more under the fee than a homeowner is, which has a relatively smaller impact on the things we're trying to do with stormwater to comply with those mandates. An overview of our expenditures, this is where the money goes, and so 45% of the city's budget goes to the school board as part of that transfer, the school board transfer. Public safety is 14% of our city expenditures. Public works, our street maintenance, or maintenance of all of our buildings, is 7%. Recreation and parks in the library is 6% of the budget. Health and welfare is 3%. Planning and economic development is 4%, and debt service and CIP together are about 9% of the budget. I do have, in the city government side, a 2 and 1/2% merit increase for employees, a 3% step increase for the police with no COLA. We did do a compensation study this year to try to evaluate our competitiveness in the region, and our compensation plan, I think, follows its recommendations. Lastly, on the operating budget, we do have some additional funds from building permit fees, and we're going to use those to hire an additional inspector to help us with the workload on that. But these are very complex projects. Just as an example, for the Lincoln at Tenner Hill, there are 15,000 electrical fixtures, 2,300. 2,300 plumbing fixtures in that one building alone. And each one of those has to be plan reviewed. Each one of those has to be inspected. These are state-of-the-art buildings with state-of-the-art fire safety and systems in them. And they require highly competent plan reviewers and inspectors.
Are those fees, the fees that they're charged, these commercial developments, are those fees, the expense of those inspections covered under those fees?
Yes, sir.
Dollar for dollar?
Yes, sir. And so these positions that are in the budget to help with that workload are paid for entirely through the building permit fees. And we'd also note that I think that there's going to be a benefit for everybody coming through the city, whether it's for a fence permit or for any kind of, you know, kitchen remodeling permit. We'll be able to work those through more quickly right now. When the North Gate was going through its final inspections, it required all of our inspectors to be there. Essentially, all other permits had to stop for about a month. We want to get beyond that type of situation with these additional resources, again, paid for through the building permits fees themselves. So with that, this is the staffing level for the general government. I mentioned earlier about the changes to our staffing during the recession. This was about a 15% decrease in staffing levels. And we have been adding positions back. And every position we've added back since 2012 has been in the area of capital project management, IT, and then in this budget for our building inspections. We do, the council is working through some things that are not in the budget. The police radios is one that we do want to try to find a way to finance in FY16 budget. It was not in the budget that I presented because of, we didn't have the funds for it. But there are a whole host of things with a 0.9% increase in the general government budget, a lot of things that eventually we are going to need to address. And I've laid those out in the budget. And the council is working through ways and strategies that we can meet those needs over time. Just going to talk very briefly about the CIP, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Lawrence. Yes, sir.
How does the large windfall come into this calculation where you just got a lot of land?
Right.
And $25 million in the water sale and the reduction in costs to maintain the water system, which were huge?
Those are good points. The, first, on the last point, the water system was an enterprise fund, and so there were no costs to the taxpayer to run the water system whatsoever. In fact, there were some benefits from the water system, some funds that were transferred to help cover our administrative costs to run the water system. And those are no longer in the budget. So we had to make those adjustments with the sale of the water system. Where the $20 million of net sale proceeds have gone, $9 million of it has been invested in the pension fund to provide an ongoing perpetual return for the taxpayers, which will be the equivalent, we believe, on average over the long term of about two cents on the tax rate per year. That starts in FY17, though, because those investments were just made. The remainder of it, the 11.7 million, is now going to be allocated through the capital improvements program for one-time expenditures. And so that's what we'll be talking about now, is strategies on how to make those investments. Overall, for the five-year planning period for our capital improvements program, our largest challenges and our largest needs are on school facilities. We have aging school facilities, and so we're putting investment there. But for public works, it's about 6% of our capital improvements. Park improvements is about 3%. Public safety improvements is about 2%. And then general government facilities, including the library and city hall improvements, is 13% of our five-year CIP. For the city hall public safety improvements, we're looking to have some changes to the CIP as previously adopted. And those, we have some costs for those. On the library, the library board has adopted a recommendation for an expansion, a small expansion, and a full renovation of the library at a cost of $8 million. This would be in FY18, so two budgets from now. And as well, to work in a cooperative manner with our property owner at 313 Park Avenue for structured parking above their existing parking deck. And that parking is proposed to serve a whole host of public needs as well as the library itself. This is scheduled for not the '16 budget, but for the '17 budget. I think the council has a lot of questions about that parking deck, and so we're going to work through those and fully vet that idea. Certainly, we'll have a year to do that. But so that is currently projected to cost $3 million for the structured parking there. For anybody who struggled to find a parking place to come to this meeting, the increased parking is trying to try to help address that for the library and this whole area. The other really important thing in the CIP is school planning. And the city council and school board are working together through a steering committee to look at the George Mason High School campus. This is a 1950s-era high school building. It's all mostly one level. It takes up a lot of space. And the basic concept is this area has now been brought into the city limits and exploring the possibility of a more vertical new high school, which would open up land that would be available for economic development that would help pay for that new high school. That's a concept that has been initially vetted with some outside consulting services from a space-fit analysis. And then the Urban Land Institute has also analyzed it from an economic perspective. And that basic concept seems to work. We've also recently received an unsolicited proposal, and we're just working right now through the process of how we might handle that unsolicited proposal. And the city council and the school board are talking about that now. So overall, in terms of our investments in capital infrastructure, we're proposing $11 million of investments, which would be largely grant or debt-financed in FY16. And then over the five-year period, we've identified $141 million worth of needs, which would be paid for through a combination of economic development for the largest one, which is the high school grants and the water sale proceeds that were just mentioned a moment ago. And so we won't go into the details of all those financial plans, but those are sort of an overview of the projects that are proposed. In terms of the debt service that we have outstanding today, we have $30 million of outstanding debt for schools. This is the Mount Daniel project, which has just come online. And we have about $14 million of outstanding debt for city government facilities. And that includes this building, the fire station, and some funds for city hall renovation of outstanding debt that we have on our books today. We are highly rated by the bond agencies, and so part of our budget planning is to make sure we maintain that. And here's summary. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Lawrence. And I think I went a little longer than I was supposed to in my presentation. And I thank you all for your attention and patience with that. But we basically, right now, we have additional revenue requirements above what the economy is giving us of about $1 million. And that would require three cents on the tax rate to close that gap. And the city council is right now working very hard on all sorts of options to try to close that gap or to work through a budget that meets the community's needs. And that's what this town hall meeting is part of that process. One question here, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you for your presentation. Couple of questions. Why is it that the city not only is proposing a rate increase, but they're doing it in a year when the assessments conveniently rose? And what is the city doing to decrease the impact on the residents?
Well, I think that's what the council is working through. And the council's budget guidance, to me, was to present a budget for general government expenditures that would be paid for just through economic growth.
If you're the city manager, what is your team doing to limit the exposure to the residents?
Well, we're working through the budget process, working with the council to find a budget that meets the community's needs and in a way that is affordable for the community as well. And so that's what this process is all about.
You're asking a question. I want specifics. What has your team done to decrease the impact on the residents? Because it's very clear the residents are holding a bad view. At a time when you're raising the budget, you have a proposed increase in the budget, you have a proposed increase in the tax, and you raised, the city has increased the assessments of the homes. I'd like to hear some specifics.
Well, we're working through a process to have a budget at the end of the day that meets with what the community's expectations.
Tell us what your team has done to reduce costs.
Well, we've come in with a budget that is a 0.9% increase in expenditures.
It's still a 0.9 or $1 million in a very small city with homeowners that are sharing the burden, bulk of the burden of that expense.
Right.
And, you know, the stormwater fee, it's a tax. The real estate fee is a tax. And I'd like to see more specifics about what the city government, under your leadership, is doing to decrease the costs and cutting back on the budget. I think everybody in this room wakes up every morning, and they know they have a budget of X number of dollars per month that they can spend. And it's on them to live within their means. And I'm sure you and your family have a similar arrangement. What I'm concerned about is I'm not hearing what the city is doing. And I hear the process, and I hear you deferring, okay? You're a city employee. You're not a politician. I want to hear specific instances of where we're trying. I think it's great that you have renegotiated the health care for the city employees, including the school system. It's those kinds of other things that I'd like to hear specifics on. Please. Secondly, next time you have a meeting like this, I would respectfully ask that you print out the copies of your slides and have them available for all the residents. The reason being is you moved along your presentation, Mr. Shields, and say, "Bear with me. We're going to go to the next slide. We're going to go to the next slide, and that's going to answer your question." But it's difficult for us to follow if we don't have a paper copy of it. Thank you.
All this material is available online. That might not address your immediate concern. But everything that is being presented today is available to the public. And if you go to the city's webpage, just with back slash budget, all this material will be there.
Fine. And answer the first question I had about other things you can do to cut expenses besides health care.
Specifically, I've come in with a budget that would allow, on the general government side, which is the part that I'm directly responsible for, a reduction in the tax rate. But I'm not the only piece of the budget that's under my direct control. There are multiple pieces to it. But in terms of the things that we've worked through, to come in with a budget that is about a 0.9% increase now requires a whole host of reductions and managers working through ways to reduce spending. We have had, I believe it's important in this budget to provide some compensation increases for employees. Our employees are what make this government work. And particularly in a high-demanding environment like this, we need to have some compensation increase. I've proposed a 2.5% merit increase for employees. So you do that in the context of an overall increase of 0.9%. And there are a whole host of management decisions of reductions and efficiencies that have to occur to make that. Because basically, everything other than personnel is decreasing in this budget. And so, you know, without going through all of those decisions, I can assure you that a great deal of work was done on that.
If I could, I think we should, if I could just interject for a moment, allow the schools to finish their presentations so that we have both pieces of information because that is the other driver of this budget, is the schools.
I would like to ask one question.
And then we had planned to open up for questions for everybody.
Would one more question be okay?
Let's just do one more question, and then we'll continue with the presentation.
My question is, I understand about the cost and salary increases. We are a very small city, and there's a lot of areas where we provide services that we may not be achieving any kind of economies of scale, which obviously Arlington, Fairfax, Alexandria, Loudoun are able to. Have we considered, in putting together this budget, or would we consider in the future perhaps contracting out some of the services that the city provides and where we obviously do not achieve any kind of economy of scale, where we are paying a lot of money to provide that service here? We might be able to contract out. I think we contract out for court services to Arlington. There are probably other areas where we provide the service where we might be able to contract out as well. And there might be some very significant savings in there. We are a very small jurisdiction there. I think there might be a lot of services that we simply should be looking at contracting for rather than providing ourselves.
I think that's an excellent point. And I'll just speak to it very briefly. We do contract out a good number of services. Our health and human services, for instance, are contracted with Fairfax County. And I think we get wonderful services at a very affordable price through that contracting. On the Arlington County side, we contract for fire, jail, E-911 dispatch, and court services, as you noted. Unfortunately, one of the big challenges in this budget, and it's been true for the past three years, is that those Arlington County contracts have been increasing very substantially year over year. And we've been trying to manage that. But that's been actually one of the big pressures on our budget, is that uncontrollable cost through those contractual relationships. And so I guess my point with that is there are some potential benefits there, but you have to manage them very closely. And you also have some vulnerabilities when you contract them out.
I'd also like to see the comparison between the cost of providing it ourselves I'd also like to see the comparison between the cost of providing it ourselves and the cost of contracting, because even though the contract Microphone, please.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
The comparisons are available from a former League of Women Voters study, and so I'll dust that back off, and we can add it to the budgets.
And I will just note that Mayor Tarter has arrived from throwing out the first pitch, and
I can afford to interrupt.
And this is Mr. Lawrence, the Vice Chairman of the School Board.
Okay, thank you. Since we're almost at 11, and I know you've got a lot of questions, I'll run through this fairly quickly, because I'm fairly sure all of you have seen this multiple times. We've got Lawrence Webb joined us. He's a current School Board member, former City Council member. Justin Castillo, our Chair, is traveling for business, which is why, I don't know, I should not stand here, which is why he's not here. We've got Dr. Jones, who's our Superintendent, and we've also got Hunter Kimball, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, who's basically our CFO. So when the hard numbers questions come, I will be pointing to them very quickly. All right. Just to go back a bit, so that you know, when we talk about capital projects, you know that this has been in the works for a while. Going back to 2009, we had a big study, I believe it was with Dewberry, that looked, especially at the high school, but looked at all our facilities, to see what condition they're in, what needs to be done, what could you possibly do. Right now, we have already, you know, obviously worked on TJ, where we got the bonds from the state that was unique and very beneficial for us financially. We opened Thackeray, as Wyatt said, so we've got a great new little preschool for special needs kids. The Mount Daniel referendum passed last fall. Thank you very much for the overwhelming support. We're in the permitting process with Fairfax County right now, aiming to open, well, not aiming, we're going to open fall of 2016. And things are moving. On the high school, I know everybody's very focused on the high school, back in, God, a year ago, we formed a steering committee with the City Council, School Board, Planning Commission, and the Economic Development Authority, to talk about how do we get a process that is going to result in what we need? Because this is a once-in-a-lifetime project for us. School's 60 years old. This is a school that's going to stand for most of the 21st century. We know people here feel very strongly about it, so we have an RFP out, we've just gotten proposals to do a visioning process. Tony did one two years ago. We had about 200 people on a gorgeous day come and spend all day talking about what they saw as a vision for the schools, for the cities and the schools, working together. So we're making sure that we get this process done right. All right. For the operating budget, that's why everybody's here. Things haven't really changed for us. Our drivers are always very simple: enrollment, teacher compensation, and mandates. The last one, those are things we don't have control over in terms of retirement and other things. Enrollment growth, we also have no control over. Kids move into the city, we have to give them a seat, we have to educate them, and we're growing, as you'll see. For the competitive teacher compensation, last year, we put in place a four-year plan to try to get teachers better compensated. And the main reason, oh, sorry, let me talk about enrollment first. Enrollment is growing, it's always been growing. Next year, we're looking at 4%. This year, thank goodness, we had less growth than we wanted, and thank goodness, the less growth was mostly at Mount Daniel, because Mount Daniel is ridiculously overcrowded, including having a class on the stage behind the curtain, which is hardly acceptable. But one thing, this is not a new phenomenon. I mean, in 30 years, we've always been going up, but especially if you look at, the trend is fairly gentle until you get to about 2008, 2009, and then it goes sharply up. So we are not only growing, we're growing a lot. But not everything is growing. So students since 2008 have gone up almost 30%. Staff has only gone up 15%. But books, technology, stuff you need in the classroom, that's gone down by almost 10% since 2008. So kids go up almost 30, the stuff we have to teach them goes down almost 10. That's not good. We're also unique in the Northern Virginia area, in that we have a much greater population of kids in our schools relative to our population. I mean, this sort of proves the truism that people move here for the schools, which is great, but it comes down to, that means more enrollment, that means more capital costs, more operating costs. All right. To the teachers. Tony, a couple of years ago, you know, noticed that we had teachers who were leaving for Arlington, leaving for other places, but a lot were leaving for Arlington. And when she looked into it, we had a lot of very significant pay gaps with Arlington. And Tony and Hunter went to the point of going through, there were what, 118 steps? And that means, if you've got a bachelor's degree plus a certain number of education hours after a bachelor's, and you've been teaching a certain number of years, you're at one step. So we've got 118 of those through our school system. And this is an example. And this shows, compared to Arlington, how much less our teachers were getting paid, which is not something you want to see in the rearview mirror. When I look at what we did over the last two years, it really shows, seeing a problem that could be a major problem, but seeing it before it's a major problem, and doing something to address it. So what we've done is, we implemented a four-year plan last year to say, we wanted to get to within 3% to 5% of Arlington. Not match them, not beat them. We know we can't do that, we can't afford to do that, but what we can do is make sure that our teachers are paid better than they are now. This is how we are at the, from the same chart you just saw. This is where we are now. So what used to be a $21,000 gap, if somebody lives here, teaches here, and they go, one second, Kathy, and they go a few miles to teach in Arlington, last year, the difference would have been $21,000, which is kind of hard to ignore. This year, it's down to 16. Next year, it'll be less, and the year after that, it'll be less. Cindy?
Can I ask the number of teachers we've lost to Arlington?
What number is it?
Gary, has the microphone?
We have it in percentages right now, but if I was looking
I'm actually, actual numbers.
I would say probably around 24 would be over
Oh, how many years?
about the last three and a half years, we actually lost some mid-year.
Have we hired any teachers from Arlington?
Gosh, I don't think so, because
Have you hired teachers from Fairfax?
We have hired teachers from Fairfax. What I will say, the biggest issue about this, what we're finding right now, is our recruitment factor. Not only are our teachers, I think our teachers are believing that the community is supporting, that's closing the pay gap. And I have, we have a teacher that's here, a lead teacher for us. They're trusting that we're working on this, and they don't expect us to be Arlington or match Arlington, but they would like to see us within 3% to 5%. And I think that they are trusting that we're doing that. And we have some teachers hanging on with us that are in that $21,000 gap. From a school superintendent, where I'm very, very concerned about it, is the recruitment aspect in hiring. And just, I think the best example, and people will say it's anecdotal evidence, but that's what it is, it's reality for us, is our middle school this year. You know, we started the year with four positions that we could not, we had somebody ready to hire, amazing teachers, they got offered a job in Arlington, and we lost them. I have a seventh-grade math class who's on their third teacher. We lost that great teacher to Arlington, because before I could get them through fingerprinting, they were offered a job for that $20,000 or $15,000 more. They actually wanted to be here, but I can't just give a teacher $20,000 more to hire them. That's not fair to people like Amanda. So we started with a substitute, then we went to the next substitute, because you can only have a substitute for X amount of days by state code. They're now on their third teacher. I had a reading specialist job, exactly the same. We had to start the year without the reading specialist, they started in October. So those are some issues that are real issues for the school system that concern me, that this is very, very important, that we close within 3% to 5%, just where the gaps are not so wide.
Can I say, the reason that I ask that, is this chart is incredibly detailed, and thanks to those who put it together, but what it does not show is the difference between this Falls Church City and Fairfax or Loudoun. And Falls Church City is way higher than Fairfax, and way higher than Loudoun. I work in Fairfax, and I know that we lose teachers to Falls Church City. We look at this salary chart like some kind of dream come true. And I just think, when you have a small city with most of the tax income coming from residential taxes, that to try to get your teachers up to the highest salaries in the entire Washington area, which is what Arlington is, and you're trying to match the highest teaching salaries, Montgomery County, you're higher than Montgomery County. You will have your teachers matching the highest salaries, and I don't think you can do that on a small tax base. I don't have anything against teachers, I am a teacher. But Fairfax County gave me a 1% increase this year, and then they prorated it for only 75% of the year, so I got a .75% increase. My husband's a federal worker, he got a 1% increase this year, after three years of no increase. We don't have the income to pay for this increase. So this table upsets me a little bit, because it's not a fair comparison, is my point.
And there is, let me just say, I think there still is a slide in this presentation, where you'll actually see regionally where we were. But there are a couple of different drivers to that, and, you know, when you look at this chart, and you look at that year five, or you look at a year three teacher, they are not going to get, really lucky to get 1% at all this year, and they didn't last year either. Our targeted scale is very targeted, where the gaps are wide, and if we are within 3% to 5%, it's very, very little. And we actually had some that actually saw a decrease in their salary this year, because health insurance went up. So this plan is not, which is not usual for a school step plan, it's usually, everybody gets the same thing. Everybody gets a step, everybody gets the same percentage. This is very, very targeted.
I could totally relate to those who got the decrease in their salary, because I feel like that's what's coming at me with this tax increase, if we get this tax increase. Okay, I will hand that over.
Okay. Sorry, are we going to keep doing questions, or should I finish?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's finish if we can, so that we can have good questions.
Yeah, I mean, what Tony said was very true. It's not taking 115 different steps and saying, everybody gets the same thing, because the gaps were not the same. So we're doing something that's unique, in the sense of, we're trying to address where it's the worst. And here, where it's red, that's where we're outside a 3% to 5% gap. We're not trying to match Arlington. We're not. We've been explicit about that. But we're trying to get within 3% to 5%, and we're doing it over four years. We're not trying to do it all at once. We're trying to do it in a responsible way to actually show our teachers that they're, A, appreciated, and that they are getting paid close to what they should be. All right. Our budget, we've got the operating budget, but we also have a couple other budgets. Community service is daycare facilities, park and rec. Basically, that's all paid for by itself, by fees, by parents. Food service, it's the same. It's the food programs, kids pay for those, it's pretty much self-sustaining. Up here, this is where Wyatt had 4.5%. We've got 5.3 still, because technically, the insurance change has been proposed, the School Board hasn't acted on it yet. So once we act on it, assuming we approve it, this will go down to 4.5%. But what this really shows is, everything's being paid by the city. And we understand that, but, you know, we do not get much from the state, we do not get much from federal, and we need to basically bootstrap on our own. This comes down to the local funding that, you know, Dave Snyder talked about, that Wyatt talked about, that everybody talks about. We get very little from the state. We pay down to the state, and we get very little back politically. I don't see that ever changing. And, you know, what Cindy mentioned about, you know, if you open it up, if you open it up, it could be worse in the end for us, rather than better. We assume that people would look and say, oh, you're not getting enough, we'll give you more. But other people might say, well, we're not getting enough, you should give us more, and give the people in Northern Virginia even less than they're getting now. So the transfer, as Wyatt said, is generally around 45%. And what this shows is, from 2005, it's generally been about the same. We've had massive growth, you remember that chart? But our transfer, in terms of percentage, has not really changed. And our spending is 85%, it's salary and benefits. That's really what it comes down to, because that's what our school system is. It's the teachers. In terms of central office, last year, we had an outside consulting firm come in and do an administrative audit, to basically look at, how are our administrative operations run? Do we have too much here? Do we have too much there? And what they came back to us and said was, you are running very lean. And frankly, on the School Board, we've got some concern that, you know, our central office, because of the huge increase in students, the central office might be running a bit too lean, because we don't want to burn people out. But the bottom line is, we're trying to put everything we can into the classrooms, because that's where it should be going. And, you know, if you look at how much we're spending on other things, it is tiny. For services, again, this is things like cost of gas. We don't have a whole lot of control over costs like that. And this shows you that, you know, if you compare to what we were spending in 2008 to 2015, yeah, we're spending more on salaries and benefits, more on services, but classroom materials, furniture, bus, you know, I talked before about books and supplies and everything, we're really doing more with a lot less, compared to the amount of students we're getting. And if you look at the city transfer per pupil, and you adjust it for inflation, 17% less than in 2007. And you remember that chart? Again, we have gone up probably 25%, 27% in terms of student enrollment in that time, and we're 17% less in terms of the transfer. All right. On the fixed costs, these are the ones we don't have a whole lot of control over. VRS is the retirement system. We have some who are still in the city retirement system. The health insurance has been adjusted, and obviously, that was a very good cost savings. And ERIP is an early retirement incentive program that was put in place several years ago, that is still in place. In terms of, you know, what are we doing to try to reduce costs? Every single year, Tony has, she's told, tell us what you need to keep the schools operating the way they should be, the way they have been, meaning, high-quality schools, good education, and a good, secure environment for the kids. And she comes and she brings us that, and then she brings us to another list, which is the unfunded needs. So we're not asking for everything the schools want. We're certainly not asking for everything Tony would like to have to make everything work. She would like additional staff at every school, more maintenance, more supplies, all of this. And one thing I want to add is, we're asking for an increase this year. We have student increase in enrollment. We are not adding any positions at all. So we've got increasing enrollment, we're not adding new teachers. What we're doing is shifting around as people leave, we're reexamining positions. But this is the first time, I think, since 2008, where we have not added new teachers. So we're also trying to, you know, keep things down, keep costs down, every place we can.
We actually cut five.
Oh, sorry, we actually cut five positions. So, and cut in the sense of retirements, and then not filling as people come, but the bottom line is, we're trying to hold costs down every time. And that's it. Sure.
In that vein, do you expect classroom ratios to remain the same?
We have a chart where we have gone out for three years, and we go and we look at what our class sizes are. And what happens with class size is, we have a School Board policy that I have to adhere to, and it's 22 for K1 and 2, not to go over 24, third grade and higher. This year, like with our kindergarten class, they were a small class, so you know that if you reduce one section, instead of being at 20 or 21, they might bump to 22. But because we're getting big enough now, which is really kind of a blessing for us, when you start having 10 sections, you can add 10 children, and everybody just goes up one. So we expect this to go up, but still within policy.
So as we now go formally into the question and answer period, we've been doing it the whole time, but if you could, just say your name and where you live, and we will try to keep the microphones moving, so that there can be a good range of questions and comments that we get.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Claire Dunn, I live in the Winter Hill section, and I grew up here, actually, on Greenway Boulevard. So my comment is largely to City Council members. First of all, I want to say thank you to those members of the City Council, and also yourselves, in terms of the government, for avoiding disasters in the past, as you have with the water, fighting with Fairfax County over the water, that was great, you know. I think the commercial development in the city's been thoughtful. I like what's going on, I like the Harris Teeter, I'm happy with all that. My comment to the City Council, though, is my, you know, giving more than lip service to keeping Falls Church City affordable, for those of us who've been here for a long time. I think that there's lots of people in this room who've already made comments showing that they are reaching their breaking point, or close to their breaking point, in terms of what they can afford. The percentages aside, the dollar value of our taxes has gone up dramatically, as you know, that means your budget has gone up in dollars. So my comment to the City Council is, please consider the affordability of Falls Church City as an important driver of your decision-making. That's my comment.
Can we go to that side, and then I'll come back over here?
Good morning. My name is Dan Pescop, I live in Falls Church, Virginia Forest, I think. I want to thank everybody for their presentation. Full disclosure, my wife teaches currently in Falls Church, and I don't want to say hardworking, because I think that would be redundant to say a hardworking teacher. My wife is working last night until 11 o'clock at night, so the money that she, that teachers receive in this, in Falls Church, I think is well-deserved. On the other hand, I've done some fast calculations, and my real estate tax is going up 11%. Now, I saw the slide that you put up there before, it said 3.4%. And between the assessment and the additional amount, the money going up to $1.33 and a half, that's 11%. I'm troubled by the fact that this is, I think everybody here would agree with me, is a relatively uninflationary period, and it's 11%. I cannot, I cannot live here much longer if I'm looking at 11% every year. Now, I mean, that, I mean, everybody has to make their own choices, but as these taxes go up, you're looking at a turnover in your population, which I don't think is necessarily good for the city, because people come into this community, they take advantage of the school system, and then they move out. So what is the lasting benefit to our community when the taxes are going up, I think, at an unsustainable level? That is forcing many of us to say, you know, I always thought I would die here, but now I can't, because it's 11% this year, and it's 11% next year. And I appreciate, you know, the presentation that you made, and as I said, my wife is a teacher here, but this is unsustainable. I don't want to repeat myself. Thank you, everybody.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Robinett, I live on Park Avenue. I just have a question for the City Manager. If you go back to the income page of your budget, if I heard it correctly, I think it might be misrepresenting how much income you're getting. On that one page, it shows you have real estate increase for 3.9 million, but the decrease of state and federal income for 1.1 million. But you're also saying that's coming from somewhere else, that's not counted there. So where So where is that 1.1 million? And if the income is not reducing, isn't that supposed to fund the increase of the 1 million?
The, we show it both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. And so basically, what you're talking about is, on the revenue side, we show, let's see if this gets through. So we have this decrease on the transportation. This is, this is the equivalent of the decrease in the state funding. So I'm not taking credit for this decrease in spending up here on the general government side, which is taxpayer-supported. I think it's kind of the main point that I would make. That was a decrease in state funding that is really sort of isolated over here on the transportation side. Now, I will say, just as a general note, our state funding has been flat or declining overall. This is the big chunk related to transportation, but the state government has not been a good partner for local governments in the past five years in particular.
Okay. Okay. I'm Lyndy Hockenberry, Seton Lane, long-term teacher here in the system, 31 years, still subbing, so I've got about 44 years within the system. And I represented the teachers in negotiating benefits and compensation for over 25 years. Yesterday, I got a letter in the mail saying that I no longer have any supplemental retirement, supplemental health insurance with the city for the school board. And it's a great concern to me as to what's going to happen. And I understand that that newly negotiated health care has not been taken to the Education Association. So I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but to all of a sudden have no support from my world as far as the supplemental health insurance covering prescriptions, and I am on Medicare. So it's kind of a concern to me. It's the first time I've ever gotten up at one of these meetings and not, and said something that I'm disagreeing with because usually I'm a strong, strong supporter of the schools and a strong supporter of the city, and I've worked most of my life for both.
One thing I would just note, you might have a specific situation that we could follow up with you on.
Yeah, I've got it, but I just wanted to mention it openly.
Okay. I think as a, as a general statement, though, that this change in health care provider is going to be a good outcome for employees, and it has lowered our costs. We did move on it quickly, and I'm very appreciative of the school staff work on this. They're our partner in procuring health insurance, and we did need to move quickly in order to realize these changes in this budget cycle. But we believe, our assessment of it is, and the reason we moved quickly is that we think it's, it'll work well for employees and it certainly is a lower cost.
I'm trying to pick some people that haven't spoken, but we'll pick them up.
Okay. And then we'll have in the back of the room. Yes, sir?
I have two questions. The first one is for you, Mr. Shields. I have a concern about the West Street and Broad Street intersection. My main concern, I'm all for progress, but my concern is displacing 27 currently money-making businesses. And how are you going to make more money putting new buildings in there when you have well-established businesses that contribute to our economy? And in that plan, I love the library, but it's not going to generate any income. And I can't understand why we're spending $8 million on a wonderful library that we already have in place. That's, that's my first big question. My second question is to the school board, which is, from what I understand, we handle special needs kids who do not go to our schools. I know of one child who goes to St. James', and he goes to special needs training at TJ, and I hope we're getting compensated for that. I have heard rumors of other kids who are brought in from other areas like Fairfax County that are attending our special needs programs. And of course, I want the best for the kids, but I'm concerned that it's a drain on our system also.
Well, let me speak to the Mason Row question, the library question, and then the school staff will respond to the second question. First of all, Mason Row is on the agenda for the council to refer out to boards and commissions a second time with their resubmitment. And that's scheduled for next Monday, and the council will consider taking that action at that time. But overall, with the Mason Row project, from a fiscal impact perspective, the reason that it is getting consideration is that it has a hotel with it and it has a net increase in retail square footage. And so one of the challenges with the project is, it has a lot of residential density that will come with it. That residential density, the taxes it generates will pay for itself, and then with the commercial, it'll more than pay for itself, and so that's why it's being considered. But those are all the, you know, sort of the things that we work through, the traffic impacts and all the other impacts that come with development. We try to do that in a very careful way, and that's what Mason Row is going through right now. But it does have, we model it as having a very powerful, positive fiscal impact for the city, and that's the reason why it's gotten the consideration that it has. The library was discussed as possibly moving into the Mason Row project. The city council, in conjunction with the planning commission and the library board, has by consensus said, we don't want to do that. We will keep the library where it is right now. So that's, that's the resolution of that potential issue. And then lastly, with respect to the library, the last renovation of that building was in the 80s. And so one of the big drivers is to renovate the building, and then at the same time, if we can expand it, and it's a pretty small expansion, but to give us some additional square footage so that it'll meet our needs, at least for the next 20, 25 years. That's the thinking behind the capital planning for the library.
Sorry, on the special ed, I'm the liaison to the special ed advisory committee this year, and I've got to tell you, I have probably never seen any program that is as complicated as special education. So I'm going to let Toni address your question.
We do have children who live in the city, and their parents may choose to go to private school. We are required by law to provide like speech services, and it generally is speech services or they will come to our system. If we have any student who is, for instance, attending George Mason High School that resides somewhere else, there's a valid reason for that. One of the reasons could be they're a tuition-paying student. We have actually worked very hard as we, when we moved our 8th grade out of our high school back to the middle school, to see if we could help generate revenue. We're not really in the generating revenue business, but we actually set our target at trying to get 20 students that we knew we could absorb without a cost. And they all pay actually more per student than what we actually fund. And we do that maximum tuition amount the state allows us. It's about $18,000, I think, now. The other students that, and I say this simply because sometimes you have parents at bus stops and they'll be talking about a child that they don't think lives in the city. We also have with McKinney-Vento, if a child is living in Falls Church City and they become homeless, and we have seen more of that across Northern Virginia in all of our school divisions, if they become homeless while they are living in Falls Church City, we don't have a shelter here. So it is often those children end up with their families. Through the help of our social services, we find placement in a shelter, which could be in Fairfax County, it could be in Maryland. But we must still provide services and actually go and transport and pick that child up by law because they became homeless in Falls Church City. What I can tell you is, every child that we service, we are actually our residency police, I say we, this is Mr. Kimball and I, probably one of the most difficult things, and we had a big surge this year just to do a double check, is any student who doesn't have current utility bill, you know, they have it, they have to prove their residency to us every year. We will literally go knock on their door to make sure they're living in that home. So we're very vigilant about that, and that's a great question.
Yeah, actually, to show you how vigilant they are, I had to send in my utility bill too, even though I'm on the school board, you know, I couldn't be elected if I didn't live here. I was told, that's, that's great to know, send it in.
He's been waiting.
That's fine. Brian Rye, I live in the Broadmont section of the city. We seem to be in kind of a bridging situation right now where a lot of things are under construction. You talked about, I know you can't give specific numbers, but was just trying to envision, if we're sitting here having this conversation, as we will, say, two years from now in April 2017, what might some of those numbers look like in terms of the contribution from Harris Teeter, from the new grocery stores? Broad West is still an issue, I know, and some others, Applebee's or whatever, might, there might be something happening there. But I know there's an amount you're getting from there now, permits and other things while they're under construction, but I presume and hope that it'll be even more once they're up and running. And sort of holding things status quo, what might residential homeowners, what might the benefit be to us once those are actually up and running?
That's, that's a good question. The fiscal impact from those projects, Harris Teeter and the Lincoln at Tanner Hill, will have, will make next year's budget a very different one from the one we're confronting right now. Roughly speaking, those have a net, a projected net fiscal impact of about $2 million after the expenses have been taken care of. In addition to that, there's another positive that will come online next year, and that is the investment that the city council made with a portion of the water sale proceeds. That will begin paying its dividends in FY17, and we anticipate that on average, that will be about $650,000 per year, almost 2 cents on the tax rate. So those are just to name two things that next year will give us a little bit of a different fiscal picture. This year, we're actually taking care of new debt service. We're taking care of some other issues in the budget that have made this budget particularly harder to deal with than normal.
There may be, it looks like better times.
We don't want to count our, you know, chickens before they hatch, et cetera.
Next year is what you said.
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to say what's going to happen next year, but those, those things that I've just noted will be helpful.
I have a question up here pending. Welcome back.
Hi, Erin Gill. I live on South Spring Street. I'd just like to hear more about the expansion to City Hall and the need for that. That's $1.5 million. And, you know, we've talked about the city government shrinking, and so I'm curious about why we need to expand the building, not, not taking into account the HVAC and other improvements like that. And then also follow up on a point that was raised at the city council meeting on March 23rd about whether or not we could combine the two parking, so we don't need to build a parking deck across the street from a parking deck.
Right.
And try to maybe get some economies of scale there. And also questioning why it's only 1.5 to add onto the City Hall, but it's 8 million to add onto the library. Is it, is the City Hall addition that much smaller? Is it that much less complex? The numbers just don't seem to add up to me. I'd just like to hear more about them. Thanks.
The, a key thing on the City Hall project, those were some add-ons that a task force recommended to a project that's actually already been approved in prior CIPs. And the City Hall project is about $11 million as its beginning point, and so the recommendations were to add these additional pieces to it. So just, I want to make that clarification. What's driving the City Hall renovations and expansions are court operations and public safety operations principally. And so those are, right now, we run court in the city council chambers. We have prisoners that come through the public lobby to get into the courtroom, and we've been put under notice that that's an unacceptable situation, and it is. So we want to address that. We also want to provide a secure parking area for the police in the back, and then we want to provide a more welcoming entrance in the front, a single point of entry where we'd have all of our public meeting spaces. We'd have a much easier to navigate building. Right now, it's just very confusing, and we have our council meetings down in the basement. We want to push all that stuff to the front and make the building more accessible for the public. Those are sort of the three main goals to that project.
Just to follow up on that, I know you talked about how you outsource the courts to Arlington, so just wondering why we need to spend more money on the courts here? I mean, I was involved in a criminal case that was called at the courts.
Uh huh.
You know, so, yeah, I was, sorry. Sorry. You know, just curious as to why we need to spend more money on our courts here if we're outsourcing that to Arlington? And I ask that as a former lawyer and as somebody who has been involved in a criminal case here in Falls Church City.
Right.
You know, why are we spending more money to have more, you know, why aren't all those cases just being moved to Arlington? Why are we expanding it to do more here?
Well, in a, the short answer is, we do contract out court services with the county, but we're required by state law as an independent city to maintain court operations here. So their judges come to us. If we were to move that to Arlington, there'd be a price tag with it, and, but because of that state mandate, we haven't really gone through the full analysis of that because we'd have to go to Richmond to get that changed, and it would be pretty unique to be an independent city without having court at all here.
And some of the additional costs for related to this project, accessibility for public central entrance, it's also ADA compliance, OSHA, fully sprinkling City Hall. The last renovations to City Hall was 1986 when the east wing was added. The core HVAC system dates back to 1957, so there's some parallels to our other facilities that haven't been maintained. Okay, so I have one question here.
Maybe we'll go here and then in the back?
Thank you. Pat Jeanelli, 1404 Ellison Street, right on the corner of the city Falls Church. I'm here today because I need to speak out against this proposed 4% tax, 4 cent tax increase. I've been told that there's not been enough people speaking out against it and more people jumping on board for, yes, we need a new high school, we need a new this, we need a new that. I do residential real estate for a living, and I'm talking with more and more people every day, older people who say, Patrick, I cannot afford my house anymore. I want to live here. My children were raised here. I grew them up here. I figured I was going to die in this house. I can't afford it anymore. We need to start looking in Arlington here or there. And I tell them, you do know that Arlington's taxes are 40% lower than the city of Falls Church. And we apparently are striving to be more and more like Arlington County, but our taxes are not saying that. And I'm just, it hurts me to listen to these elder people say this, and I'm going to profit off of them moving. But, you know, you have to take into your consideration, your heart, you're like, that's terrible that these people can't even afford their homes. They're moving their children back into their house with them just so they can pay their taxes. Their houses have been paid off, but they can't afford the taxes because they're on fixed incomes. So, and it just perplexes me that if you study history and history and history, in and out, day in, day, no society has prospered by taxing their citizens that much. They have no disposable incomes, they have nothing to do. Schools are great, we love schools, kids prosper from schools, but the more these older folks are moving out, the more families with children are moving in, and that is a perpetual cycle that will not end. And we just, enough is enough sometimes, and you have to stop somewhere. We have to tighten the belt as a city, they have to sit down. City council does a great job, and we thank them all for doing what they do, as well as the manager, you know. But we have to stop spending, you have to tighten the belt a little bit, and the citizens cannot take this anymore. They're bleeding from the inside out. It's, it's, it's hard. And then that's all I have to say. Thank you.
In the back here.
Hi, Dave Haggy, 306 Shadow Walk, and this ended next month, it'll be 20 years for me here in the city. A comment, I'll follow up with Pat in a second, but the library, I sat through the meeting, we had, I think, a month and a half ago over here in the art room, that was very illuminating. I'm of the belief, we don't want to have a society where everybody just walks around with a Kindle or their laptop, okay? Libraries serve a very valuable, valuable role, and I would never want to live in a place where there's no libraries, physical libraries. That said, I don't like the idea of spending $8 million on something where you're getting, a lot of the people that are coming to that library are from Fairfax or Arlington. I think people should be able to go to each other's libraries, that's great, but I don't think we should be subsidizing it. I did learn at that meeting last month that the HVAC system is horrible, and that's absolutely unacceptable, we should fix that. You shouldn't freeze in January in that building, you shouldn't be sweltering in July and August. So that's a no-brainer. The elevator, I understand they're cannibalizing parts from vendors to keep it going. That needs to be fixed probably from an ADA standpoint, but let's face it, 99% of the people are not in a wheelchair or with bad arthritis, and those stairs, those circular stairs are real easy to take. You know, we should probably fix it, but fixing the HVAC and that elevator is probably, what, a million, million and a half? It's not eight. I know that if we go past 20% renovation, you have to then deal with ADA. I say, let's not go past the 20%. Let's just, you know, fix the stuff that needs to be fixed. And when you have somebody who's in a wheelchair and they can't reach up the upper stacks, one of our fellow citizens or library staff members can help them pull, pull books down and not go past that 20%. or library staff members can help them pull, pull books down and not go past that 20% where it's going to cost us $8 million bucks. And as to Pat's comments a few minutes ago, I also, I think we're both in the same office with RE/MAX and a Realtor, and that's my concern, is that we get to the point that people start to realize, is it worth it anymore? And my gut tells me, I can't pull out any charts, I can't show you anything scientific, but my gut tells me we're getting closer to the falling off that cliff than we are with lots of, you'll get different answers, but I think we're, it may be happening for you. And, and somebody said a minute ago, a great, a little city should be people with no kids, and we were with no kids for the first six or seven, well, we had kids, but before they got to Mount Daniel, seven or eight years with no kids, and we like living here, and I'd like to not run right out four years from now when my eighth grader graduates. I'd like to hang out another 10 or so years before I go wherever I go and not run out because, oh, my kid's done, I'm out of here. It's, it shouldn't be a Ponzi scheme, it should be young people, kids with people's school, and elderly folks, and they come and go for reasons that are not just based on the tax rate. So hopefully, we can get to that point real soon. Thank you.
I have a question for you, about five here.
Okay.
Wyatt, one of the points that really hasn't been brought out very much is, the assumptions operating behind the budget are extremely fiscally conservative. Question that might be asked is, you know, how much money do we just have sitting in the bank earning no interest? In the context of that, you have an item which just got passed over that 1.2 million has to be put back in the bank to make up for a fund balance that was used last year. Okay? You're saying no, but that's the way it was presented, so I need to, no, I need to ask, what is that? How come a million and a half is taken away from what is new revenue to the city in terms of the ledger sheet at least?
Right.
And what, what accounts for that? And how much money do we have sitting in the bank?
Okay. The 1.2 million that is to address FY15 use of fund balance, we adopted a budget for the current fiscal year using fund balance to pay for operating costs. So in order to fix that in FY16, because that's not a recurring source of funds, that, that's what that is. That's not to put money into reserves, that's simply to, to meet our operating costs. The city does have an unassigned fund balance, like, like all municipalities do. It currently has a balance of about $13 million. That helps us with our capital program, and that is really a key financial health measure for the city. It's, it's the equivalent of two months of expenditures, and it's, it's what's recommended as a best practice for, for municipalities.
Good morning, I'm Midge Wong, I live at 203 South Oak Street. I feel I really have to come and speak out. I've been here 51 years in the city, working on one of our historic homes, all 51 years. I'm very dedicated to historic preservation. I've tried to do my share during those years. I'm still on the Stark Commission, I'm catchboard, and I also was on the VEPIS Board for many years, trying to contribute a little bit to what I believe in. I've enjoyed very much being in the city. It's a very friendly place, it's a wonderful place because there's so many people that care, and you work with them and you get to know them, and it makes it a very special place. I don't want to have to leave. I certainly don't want to have to leave that I put 51 years of my life and probably my entire teaching salary for 20 years into restoring a home that's part of the fabric of the city. We have like 91 historic homes, and they're all beautiful and very exciting. I want to see the city stay balanced. I want to see a love of our history and services and all parts of the community and a variety of people. I don't want to see all of us forced to leave this community and this home, and I think that the city will be different if we don't have this group of people who've been here for years and who move in, as some of them have said, that want to stay here for years, work with the city, be part of it, protect its history and its progress as it goes forward. We're getting unbalanced, and I think it's awful, and I don't want to see it happen to me or many others that I think are in the same position. Thank you very much. Taxes should stay down.
I'm Mary Chavis on Lawton Street. I have a question that follows up on this earlier question on our reserves. I understand there is a suggestion, I don't know if it's a proposal before the council, to change the manner in which we invest those reserves, to see if we could increase the return on the investment and thereby reduce the expenses that have to come from taxes.
The, the city's reserves are currently invested in a pool with other local governments, and they earn a very low rate of return because we maintain liquidity. We can get, it's very safe and we can always access it. The treasurer and the CFO have brought forward to the council a proposal to invest in another pool, which has longer-term investments and still very safe, less liquid, and we have factored the revenues from that, from that investment strategy into the budget. And they, they will be reporting to the council very shortly in terms of the amount of money that they would recommend to be put into that fund, and so it's possible that through that recommendation, that that number that we forecast for investment returns will change slightly based on that recommendation. It's not a budget driver, it's not a huge game changer for us because even with the higher yielding investment, it's still very safe, and so your yields are still going to be very low in today's low-interest rate environment. But it will be better.
But there wouldn't be a significant cents per dollar impact on taxes?
Unfortunately, no. And because, you know, still, still, it's just, in today's environment, those yields are still just quite low. And, and that's sort of a global issue of everybody trying to chase yield and taking on more risk, and, and we're limited by law, even if we wanted to do that, we're limited by law in our ability to, to do that.
One there, two here, and one in the back.
Good morning, my name is Gary Laporta, and I live on Chanel Terrace in an apartment project where you saw the 35% adjustments to assessments, which equates to my rent will be going up next year. If you've been, I've been here 20 years, I've been to probably more meetings and things than most people in this city. For the last 20 years, all I've heard was, when we propose a new project, we don't want to look like Arlington. We don't want to be Arlington. This year, I keep hearing, we want to be just like Arlington, okay? The tallest building in our city is eight stories. There are 10 buildings in Arlington County that are over 300 feet tall, okay? Boston, Clarendon are all developed, and they are not eight stories tall. Yet, we go through them every day and think nothing of it. The thing is, is we need to decide who we're going to be, okay? And if we're not going to be more economically developed, then our taxes are all going up, and there's nothing we can do about it. One of the things that we talk about that was outsourced is the trash service that we've outsourced as well. So there are things that have been outsourced. We did try to outsource our IT. We won't go into what disasters those were in the city, but we've now gone back to insourcing it because it gave us, gives us more control of our IT things. So I have to applaud the city manager. You know, I see every year where, you know, it's scrape this little piece, scrape that little piece to try to get the budget down. And I'm just, you know, I get to the point where I'm just frustrated with who we're going to be. You know, we either have to make money in economic development and not oppose every single commercial development. And when he talks about net, he's talking about net-net, which means they take into consideration what the, the, these highly effective commercial projects that are, are the commercial businesses that are there now are, are contributing to the city against what the others will. So it's not just, you know, our services that are being picked off, it's also that. So when we say the net revenue is actually above and beyond what we already make now. So those are some clarifications I think I wanted to make, and whoever's next can go ahead.
Here, here, and Wendy in the back.
And I'll just note, our plan was to go until noon today, and, and so if there are any other questions, we'll stay here and answer them after that, but that was, that was our intent at the beginning of the meeting. Yes, sir?
No, we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we're working my way back.
Thank you. Letty Hari, South Spring Street. We've lived here since 2003, so we've been here a while, even before kids. We've seen the city change a lot, we think it's actually for the better, and I think I represent a growing cohort of young families and young professionals that are attracted to Falls Church City. So we are very pro-development. You really can't have your cake and eat it too, because you need the development to support the schools. The second point is, there was an earlier, really salient point around this being a really important bridge year with development coming online. A suggestion in upcoming budget meetings is perhaps show, I know you don't want to count your chickens before they hatch, but to show what projected tax rates may be, and that may help alleviate some of the concerns for this year. If you think things really are going to get better with Harris Teeter and the Rushmark Properties coming online, and then potentially the Grove and Park Development happening, that may help citizens feel better about this year if we think that in the future years, it will get better and pay for themselves and pay for more.
Hi, Kathy Rice, I live over in Jackson Court, and 15-year resident of the city now, I think, at that point, and wanted to speak to actually a couple of points. First of all, on the library, I have not been involved in the whole development of the renovation of the library. I do love that library, it's a great library, and I will say, at least with regard to the parking garage there, I'm in favor of building some sort of, or somehow solving the parking problem in Falls Church, so if we build a parking garage to do that, that's fantastic. I really do think that the businesses in Falls Church may really pick up if we ever solve the parking problem. My, I myself have driven around, trying to go to stores downtown and had to give up because I wasn't able to park my car. So yay, if we can build a parking garage and solve that, our businesses may, and we may fill some of those empty storefronts if we can provide some parking and people can move in. So that's a great idea. Having said that, I, and I, I guess I pretty much have already made my point on the increase in the school budget. I, I don't feel like I need to go over that again, do I? And, but one thing I would say that, and this has to do, I feel a little awkward here because I'm going to speak to somebody in the city council. The increase in the city council or the city budget this year is primarily an increase in the school board budget, because the city budget, in fact, you have cut that, or, or you are reducing it. So the increase in the tax rate from 1.305% to 1.345%, and I think you've now said maybe you're only increasing it three cents?
That's right.
Okay. That increase is going to the school budget. Is that correct? Pretty much.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yes.
Yeah. Now, Ms. Connolly, I voted for you because I know you and I like you, and I think you are a thoughtful and considerate person. You are also a school district employee, and it seems to me that if we have a school district employee voting on a budget which is primarily raising the salaries of school district employees, that to me is a conflict of interest. So I would ask, are you willing to recuse yourself on this vote? Because to have a, and I, I'm putting you on the spot here, I get that. You don't necessarily have to respond to this right now, but I do believe that, and I like you, and I, I'm sorry to call you out like this, but that, that would be a conflict of interest. You would be voting on, if not your own pay increase, then the pay increase of the people you work with, the pay increase of perhaps the person you respond to, you work for, and certainly the people that you go to lunch with and have coffee with every day. So I would, I believe it appears to me to be a conflict of interest, and sorry to call you out in public, but it is. It is what it is, so, okay, I'm going to pass that back over.
All the council members will be voting on their own tax rates too.
Okay. But for her to vote on that, that's what I consider to be a legal technical conflict of interest, okay?
Wendy Freeman, I live on Park Avenue, and I was told when I come to get out my League of Women Voters button and put it on, so I did, and so I'm here also representing the League. I just have a question. We talk about anecdotal evidence, and I know sometimes that's all we have. Is somebody keeping track of who are the people in the city who are being forced out because they can't afford their taxes? Who's leaving for that reason? Where are they going? Does anybody have these numbers? Are we talking about, I don't know if we're talking about 10 people, 100 people, or 1,000 people.
I think it's a good question, but it's a very hard question to answer. People do not check in with the city government when, when they put their house on the market, and, and so it's really kind of an unknowable thing. What you can track is the census data and, you know, kind of how our demographics are going, and, and, and so that's, you know, I know the League of Women Voters has been, had sessions with Gary Fuller and, and the Northern Virginia Regional Commission on demographics, and, and I, so, you know, those are things, I think, sort of broadly that we can track over time.
If I may, we also have tax relief programs.
Yeah.
All right? And we updated them last year, we increased them, so I encourage those that feel that they do have this tax burden and tax issue, that you take advantage of the tax relief program. It is there.
Who qualifies for that?
You'll have to check with the treasurer.
Yeah, the treasurer is the lead point of contact for that program, and so certainly I encourage people to contact Jodi Acosta on that.
And I would note, the material is on the city's website also, under the treasurer's page. Lyndy, and then I'm going to come up to Gus.
This is, okay. I just came in at the tail end of your statement about Mary Beth. I was on council for eight years, and I feel like I was very capable of voting on the tax rate and everything else on city council. It would be illegal if you were, if she was on the school board, she couldn't be doing what she's doing. But as far as having, we've all, we both checked very thoroughly with the attorneys, and there is no problem with Mary Beth Connolly voting.
Could I clarify my vote, my point? I, I'm not saying there's problems with you being on the city council.
Microphone?
I, I get your point. Ms. Hockenberry, and I'm not saying that, I perfectly agree, there's no problem with you being on the city council, you're very considerate and thoughtful, and I appreciate your input, but this vote is pretty much a vote on increasing the school budget and increasing the salary for school employees, and I think that in and of itself is a conflict of interest. Other things that the council considers, I'm sure Ms. Connolly has wonderful input, and, and I'm glad she's there, but I believe that specific vote would be a conflict of interest, okay? Just to clarify. Would you, yeah, sorry, because I'm calling you out.
Yes. I'll just make a quick reply to that. I'm not planning to recuse myself from that vote. I think if indeed we do vote to raise taxes, I'm also going to take that hit on my personal taxes, just like everybody else's. I think there are a lot of issues that go into creating a strong city, and they are all reflected in the budget, and I think as someone who works for the schools, I see that in a different way than almost everybody else in the City of Falls Church does. Other people on the school, on the city council have kids that attend the schools and may indeed want to make sure that the teachers that their kids are seeing every day are having an increase in salary. So there's a lot of things that go into the budget.
They are indeed my coworkers and myself, right.
And I'm really weighing all those things really carefully, and I hear what everybody else is saying, and I really don't want to vote to have my own taxes go up at all, so...
Has the city lawyer looked at that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's legal, and there are, yeah. Kathy, there are, there are actually, within the state of Virginia, a good number of school employees that serve on their town and city councils. The city of Fredericksburg, Fredericksburg, Virginia, has two school employees on their city council, one of whom is the principal, I think, of the middle school. So it's really common, and it's not, it's, it can seem a little awkward, and sometimes I, I really try to keep that separate. Dr. Jones and I don't sit and discuss budget, ever. We really keep that out of our relationship, and I think that's really important.
But if the standard is appearance of the majority, I think we have, we have that plain and simple, on appearance of the majority.
Can I just add one thing as a reminder? We, we do have a very professional relationship with Mary Beth, and we don't discuss the budget, and I want to say, last year, actually, my heart went out to her because she did vote against and actually reduced the school budget. We never discussed that, but I know that there was some heat from actually school families because they weren't happy that the budget wasn't fully funded. So I think she demonstrated last year an incredible integrity to be able to make a sound decision as a citizen of Falls Church.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Gus Knapp. I live on South Oak Street, and you already heard my mother talk. I've been in the city 50 years, 51 years too, I grew up here. And the only way we can afford to, because not just the taxes, it's an old house, so it's a lot of maintenance issues, but my mother, myself, and my wife, we got three incomes, that's why we keep the house going. But I think one of the things that disturbs me about the way the taxes and the assessments and all that is, you're going to get into this, people are going to grit their teeth and move in to get their kids into the real good quality schools, and then move out, and you're going to lose more and more of the older people, the people who don't have kids, who don't have a fixed commitment to things, and you'll get into a death spiral where everything will just, you know, plunge down into, eventually, the property values will crash if it goes far enough that way, and that's not good either. The other thing is the, looking at the budget, the way it's going now, it's like, there isn't really, what the balance I would like to see in things is this huge amount going to the schools, and I have nothing against schools, I went to school myself, my mother was a teacher, you know? And I believe that we do need to fund them, and that's important. But at the same time, we can't be cutting back on all the other, you know, community services that are just as important for maintaining an actual community instead of just a bunch of parents and schoolkids, which, combined with the tax rates and all that, eventually, that's all you'll have left, which isn't really good, because then your enrollment keeps going up, and the schools keep needing more money, and there's less money for anything else. Like I said, it's a death spiral. You need to have, you need to address basic maintenance of facilities, basic living quality for all the people who live here, sidewalks, streets, other aspects of community, the library is important to maintain that, and, you know, functional quality, arts and humanities, historic preservation, services for disabled people, all these things have to be given as equal a balance as you can. And otherwise, it's just going to become way too one-dimensional to be sustainable. That's, that's my spin on it, anyway. Thank you.
One here, and I, no, I have one on the front.
Thanks. Nata Beruch, council member. I was just going to ask Mr. Shields to address one point in the budget presentation, and that's to talk a little bit about how this budget, if it all supports our CIP on the Pago side specifically. Two, I certainly and perhaps other members of council are going to be pushing Mr. Shields to look at further tax relief programs in order to preserve some more balance in the city. And the third point I'd like to make, you know, this is more commentary, but we get through every budget as a city. And I hope as we, as a council, school board, and as citizens collectively, really come together in figuring out how we're going to do our budgeting as we move forward, some of that is going to be based on economic improvements. But I think in the long run, what I see in our budget is how are we going to meet our capital needs? That's where the big elephant in the room is, whether it's a library that may be needed, whether it's capital improvements to city hall, et cetera. So I think we're going to have to figure that out. And one approach that I think we need to figure out collectively is, you know, living within our means on the operating budget and focusing in on how we're going to do that on the capital side, and whether there's a willingness to pay extra taxes to support specific projects and keep the operating size in check, which is, I think, what we tried to do on the general government side. And is there a willingness on the council, school board, and on citizens to do that? So I hope to talk to citizens more about that. I certainly will be talking about it more during the budget process. But that could be one approach that we take as we move forward. And I think the focus needs to be not just this year's budget, and perhaps you've heard me talk about this, but looking throughout the horizon of the CIP and beyond that.
Do you want to answer the question?
Okay. In terms of the tax-supported part of the budget, I think Mr. Beruch's question was, how much of the tax support is really going for capital improvements? And the answer to that question is, it is going towards debt service. We have $5.8 million in debt service, and this is in your tax rate. But the other sort of pays-you-go things that we do to take care of facilities, one-time expenditures, that has all been taken out of the tax rate in the last three years. And so that's a, that's a structural issue that we need to address eventually, but we're using our reserves, we're using our fund balance and our capital reserves to pay for those types of things. Eventually, that will run out, and we'll need to address that with a sustained source of revenue.
And my point is that that's really not a sustainable model, so we do need to discuss that. And that, in my view, is directly tied to our operating, and if we can't keep the operating in check, we're going to have bigger problems on the capital side outside of this year. And I think we just need to have a discussion about that as a community, and this, you know, we'll solve this year's budget one way or the other, but we've got to hit the capital, because it's just not sustainable in the way that we're headed right now.
Hi, I'm Susan Carney. I'm a member of the school board, and I suspect that earlier this morning before I got here that John Lawrence showed a slide in his presentation, which would inform the community that the percentage of the city's income that is spent on schools has been flat essentially for the past 10 years, except when it dipped a little bit when we were all trying to pay back our savings account. And so when you say the schools are getting too expensive, I have to say they're not. We're spending the same percentage of our income on schools this year as we did last year and the year before and before and before. The schools aren't eating up more of the city's budget. At the same time, I would say, we're spending 20% less on inflation-adjusted basis per student for schools. So I think the board has done a great job over the past 10 years at maintaining our expenses, at cutting our expenses, and I just felt like I had to say that.
Hi, my name is Peter. I live in here in Falls Church. I have some observations, and I, or I have questions, and I have some observations. To the gentleman for the school board, you had said that the school board has not yet considered the approval of the rate reduction for health care. Am I correct?
The change in insurance, yes.
Okay, fine. Is that a separate function, and you can choose not to accept that? Is that what, am I to interpret that to me?
We have to amend our budget because it's part of our budget.
Okay. And will you, all right, fine. So then, am I to understand that that will be completed by the end of this budget cycle so that those savings to your budget will then be, for the health care, will be incorporated into your new budget?
Yeah, that's on our agenda.
It'll get done.
Yeah, there's really no question about the health insurance aspect.
You're going forward with it, but you just have to do logistics.
Right. But the school board actually puts a number for it to city council, and we just have to, the school board has to decide to amend that amount as a body.
That's fine, fine. Then another question I have is, I seem to recall reading, and I want to clarify this because I don't believe what I read all the time, especially with papers here in this region, but I seem to recall reading that the city has a requirement to accept 100% of the school budget into its own budget. Is that not correct?
The, what that's a reference to.
Do you understand what my question is?
Yeah, I understand your question.
Okay.
And so what that refers to is, I, as the city manager, am required to convey the school board's adopted budget request to the city council in the budget that I present to them. And so in Fairfax County, as an example, the school board might adopt a budget request, but the county executive, and usually it's because there's been a lot of dialogue about this already with the board, the county executive will say, well, this is what the school board's requested, but I'm recommending something different.
So let me restate.
But under the city charter.
You get their budget, and you are required to present it to the city council for consideration?
I'm, I'm.
At dollar for dollar?
I'm required to incorporate their request into the budget that I present to the city council. I cannot change it.
All right, fine. And so how is that?
Now, the city council ultimately is the decider.
Makes the decision.
That is correct.
But if they adopt a budget, then in theory, 100% of their budget goes through. Now, where did that, where did that issue, where did that rule or law come from?
It's in the city charter.
It's in the city charger. Okay, charter, excuse me. Okay, fine. The next question I have is that, I seem to recall seeing a slide there at the beginning of your presentation, sir, and bear with me, I think it said that the breakdown of family, I'm sorry, the breakdown of homeowners inside Falls Church City represents, is represented at 18%?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, I rounded to 18, okay. So then, if you have 18% of the homes that are owned in this city represent?
Eighteen percent of the population, not homes. There's a difference.
What is the number of homes in Falls Church that have children inside our school system?
I will turn to.
2,144?
Yes, sir.
And how many homes are there in Falls Church City total?
The last time that we actually ran this number, and we could certainly go back and do it again, it's around 40% of the homes in Falls Church have children in them.
I'd like to know specifically.
And that's a challenge, to be honest with you, because we have preschoolers that are coming our way, and if you talk to the library now, they're seeing, you know, preschool activities with 200 children.
But I think the city, the residents of the city are entitled to that number. Because I would, the reason why I brought that up is that whatever the, that percentage is, whether it's 18%, 40%, that is one of the significant drivers. The cost of funding our schools is one of the significant drivers of the city budget and our tax base. And so, that being said, I would encourage publicly the city officials to please look at that, because once you get that data, then you can look at how you might want to retool your budget. As with any business, whether it be a county, city, federal, or even a commercial business, when things, when the formula's not working, or the business model doesn't appear to be working, as evidenced by some of the comments that people are saying from the city, and the fact that we are losing. I know of two families in my very small community here in town that have left my development because of the high taxes. My wife and I moved here from McLean, where we had three-quarters of an acre of land. And we moved here to Falls Church because we wanted to downsize. Both our kids, my second son was going off to college, we didn't need a bigger home. We moved down here. Our taxes here in Falls Church City, four years later, for a small postage stamp of a lot in Whittier Park, is as much as my three-quarter acre lot in Fairfax County. So here we are, we're coming down to live in a beautiful little town that we want to walk to the different attractions and all kinds of things, and we love our home. And we had said that we were going to die here, but the fact of the matter is, the tax rate has forced us to reconsider that. Now, to make matters worse, our plans are to retire in a few short years. And if I look at the numbers of what it's going to cost me to move to either Fairfax County or Arlington or some other place, the return on the investment is way past my retirement date. So now we're forced with the decision, because it's going to cost $35,000 for a real estate commission, $10,000 to move, the taxes that we pay to sell the house, the taxes we pay to buy a new house. That's where the, you know, the return on the investment doesn't work for us. And so we're now considering whether or not it makes sense to get out of here sooner.
Okay. Well, so we do have the information that you've requested. I think Cindy actually presented it in the CIP, but at any rate, we can email that to you, and we can post that on the website.
I'd like to see that. And I'd like to encourage you to please take a look at that. You know, in the format of a budget, a business model, where maybe the homeowners with the children might be in a position to pick up a percentage. It's illegal. It is illegal. Wonderful.
Okay. All right. The, we had promised that we would close at, we would end at noon. I want to thank everybody for coming on a beautiful Saturday to spend the morning with us. I don't know if Mayor Charter, Mayor Charter is here to the right. If you'd like to close this out, sir.
Everybody wants to get out of here. Have a great day. Thank you all for coming. We have for everyone.
All right, thank you.